Welcome to the December 16th meet, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair beneath him, I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zorko?
Here.
Andrew Lamb?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Josh Levine?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now.
[inaudible]
Thank you. And no one else, I assume, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for Select Board meeting announcements. The Town of Long Meadow filed a request with the Department of Public Utilities for approval of a municipal aggregation plan pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 134. The department will hold a virtual public hearing on Wednesday, January 15th, 2025, beginning at 2:00 PM. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. The annual town meeting has been set for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. Citizen petition articles with certification by the town clerk are due in the Select Board's office no later than 4:30 PM on Monday, January 27th, 2025. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting. On Friday, December 20th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, the municipal offices at Greenwood Center will hold an open house. The open house will offer the community a chance to see the upgrades that were done to the spaces to convert the former adult center into the new consolidated town offices. And finally, the Town of Long Meadow Municipal Offices will be closed on Wednesday, December 25th for Christmas and on Wednesday, January 1st for New Year's Day. We wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year. And with that, we will now move into resident comments. Do we have anyone here? Go ahead, Tom.
All right, you know the drill.
Yes, I do. It's been a while, actually, so that's good. Hold on just one second. Okay, so, Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. As you heard me say, I am for fiber done properly. And Ethan Lynn were kind enough to speak with me last Monday, which have been delayed. I got a subsequent correspondence and I'm still a little unclear on two issues and maybe a third. I believe they consulted with council, but I've not seen the response and sometimes responses are limited to specific inquiries. Fiber is a huge undertaking and I encourage you to consider the following before you discuss and potentially sign the IGA. I'm looking at this as valid due diligence questions and commercial contract and funding for a project financing. In fact, you may want to flip your discussion about an MLP and the IGA, have the MLP first. First question, who or what entity is authorized to sign the IGA? Town manager is authorized to sign an IGA, however, fiber is governed by MGL 164, is to be carried out by an MLP which has an MLP board. The MLP board should like be signing the IGA as other towns have done. Note in Article 8, at town meeting, the Select Board was authorized to take appropriate action to establish an MLP for the operation of a telecom system. This did not authorize the town manager and the Select Board is specifically not allowed to carry out fiber responsibilities except as an MLP board. Second question, what entity has the funding and authority for expenditures? Article 9, at the town meeting, approve the transfer of $491,000 from free cash for the initial phase of the fiber project and the MLP board to carry out the task. Note, the town manager can sign an MGA but has no control over the $491,000 of funding in the MLP. I would not sign a contract if I was unsure if I was able to disperse funds. The MLP is being funded and is to be governed by an MLP board. Third thing is how could a well-intentioned municipal fiber task force have chosen a fiber provider and negotiated a $491,000 contract both without a formal RFP? Task force charge was to explore municipal broadband options and report back to the Select Board with recommendations. Long Meadow took a hybrid approach, not an MLP and not a citizen board and a subsequent MLP board and then a formal RFP. Mentioned beneath the design contracts, might not have to go out to a public bid. And he got back to me and said that is indeed the case. However, is the municipal fiber task force a government body as defined and what authority did they have? I'm less conversant on this matter, but do know that when Phase 2 for the equipment starts, MGL Chapter 164, Section 56D requires an RFP for any equipment purchase of $50,000 or more. In summary, my questions are, who can sign the fiber contract? Probably should be an MLP under MGL 164. Who can spend the money? It appears to be the funding was for the MLP board and then, like I said, I'm less conversant on this. Did the municipal fiber task force have the authority to choose a vendor and negotiate a contract without an RFP? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you for the extra 20 seconds.
It's the, you know, holiday spirit. Anyone else, resident comments? Anyone online, Mike?
No.
No, okay, great. Okay, we will move into interviews. We've got one interview scheduled for tonight and that is a vacancy for the DEI Committee. We have Rebecca Lindsey with us. If you could, Rebecca, if you could step up to the, sit up here in front of a mic.
The same way.
Yep, that'd be great. And if you could-
If you could call me Becky, please.
Okay, Becky.
Not even my mom called me Rebecca.
If you could start with your name, address, and just tell us a little bit about why you're seeking appointment to the DEI Committee.
My name is Becky Lindsey. I live at 121 Wilken Drive in Long Meadow. Moved here late 2022, so I've been here almost two years. And I'm already part of First Church and the social justice team. I belong to LARQ. Equality of for everyone is real important to me. I'm not sure if you, I do still work. I have a company, Mineslash, and do exhibits for children's museums and science museums. I'm working less now, so that's why I want to do more volunteering on issues that are important to me.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone have any questions for Becky? Josh?
Yes.
So when we first were putting together the DEI Committee, LARQ was already, had a lot of members in town and there were some concerns about whether things would overlap, if there would be open meeting issues.
Say that one more time.
If there would be meeting, if things would be discussed at LARQ that should be discussed at DEI. Have any DEI Committee topics come up in LARQ meetings?
I think that's in part true, but LARQ appears to be specifically focused on sort of African-American rights, not necessarily all-inclusive focus. I would say the social justice team at First Church is pretty inclusive in terms of what they're concerned about, but they're certainly not connected to the town in any way. They're just connected to the church. So that would not be my, I don't think there's a conflict as far as that's concerned.
Great. And a follow-up question, the DEI Committee, one of the things I think that they have tried to come up with ideas for was outreach and how to get out into town. Would your work, do you think that could help inform things on displays or something interactive to-
Well, actually, yes, everyone in Long Meadows almost already gotten my number in terms of I can do graphics and all of that. Also, my museum work starts with strategic analysis, so I'm actually pretty familiar with working with demographics and surveys and those kinds of things because I've helped seven museums open and if you don't make sure museum community is going to be sustainable, it doesn't matter that you can make it look great. So there's a lot of that involved in the work that I've done. But certainly, I think anybody been involved would say I just do whatever needs to be done to get the message out and to figure out what the message needs to be and how it needs to be delivered and et cetera.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
I would just add that just for those viewing at home, maybe if you're new to town, what LARQ is, because nobody's really explained. It's the Long Meadow Anti-Racism Coalition and anyone who's interested can just look it up and get involved.
I'm sorry, I didn't-
I was just explaining what LARQ was, essentially, for those who might not, because nobody really combined in the conversation.
What everyone says at the meetings is, we're really, Black Lives Matter, but we don't want to be affiliated with that, but that's sort of our mission. So it doesn't, I in fact think they should become more diverse in their interest, but I don't think that what they're doing is the same. In fact, I know that the DEI Committee is now going to begin doing some programming at the adult center, which is not affiliated with LARQ at all.
Right, perfect, okay. Anyone else? Okay, great. Thank you so much for joining us tonight and then we'll vote on your appointment at our next meeting.
Okay, so I just take off now.
You can just take off. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, and we also have board and committee appointments, so we've got one appointment for tonight. Dan?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mike McLean for Board of Assessors seeking the one vacant three-year term which expires on 6/30/27.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to put in an argument for why we should reappoint Richard Foster. And I think there are two reasons. One is that a couple of years ago, I think it was two years ago, town was in a real bind looking for people on the Board of Assessors. In fact, we couldn't set the tax rate. And we put out a request for people to be on the Board of Assessors and Mr. Foster stepped up and it was a big-time step up because there wasn't a whole lot of other people doing it. And he did that at considerable amount of personal sacrifice. He went to the classes, he took the courses, he did what needed to be done to learn the process and got pretty involved in it. And I think that it'd be a shame for us to say we don't really recognize and thank and appreciate the people who step up and work for the town and step in when, in this case, we really, really needed somebody. The second reason is because I think we all, I know I did, got a letter from the Chair of the Board of Assessors saying that he thought Mr. Foster was doing a really good and thorough and conscientious job. And I think there's a lot to be said for that. We don't always get those endorsements and I think it's important that we pay attention when we get those endorsements. You know, I'm not saying Mr. McLean's not a good candidate. I don't know him that well. I assumed he'd do a fine job, but I think the fact that we had somebody who stepped up, stepped in when the town really needed somebody, somebody who's done the homework. The Board of Assessors is a tough position because they meet primarily during the day. It's not an evening job. I think somebody, you know, and that was one of the problems we had, we couldn't really work with, you know, get people who were working all day long and couldn't take time out for the Board of Assessors meetings and appeals and things like that. And the fact that we got a pretty sterling endorsement would say to me that I think we ought to reappoint Mr. Foster to the Board of Assessors.
Thank you. Anyone else? Andrew?
I also would like to thank Mr. Foster and Mr. McLean for being willing to volunteer for this. I did also feel that Richard Foster has not only dedicated himself to our town, but also this, I didn't know who else got this email from Mr. Zeller, who is the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, but he, I'll just quote from it in case someone didn't get it. He just basically said, "Richard Foster is a great asset as a board member. Richard would dig into the minutiae of analyzing the values of homes fairly in my eyes, more than most since I have been on the board. I think he is a great asset as a board member." I honestly think it's only a three-person board. I think experience is something that's probably very important and we'll all benefit from as a town, so I would echo Mark's assessment on that, but I do appreciate both individuals volunteering to consider serving the town.
Okay, thank you. Josh?
I was just going to say, I echo much of what Mark is saying as well as Andrew. I think Mr. Foster has done a good job serving our community for several years, I think over a decade actually. And I had supported him right after I got elected, two years ago. I supported him for Board of Assessors. I personally believe that this committee should have new eyes when we're talking about assessments. It's a very important committee, as are all of our committees in town, but I just think that we have somebody, a veteran in Mike McLean, who has served our town well on the task force already. I think Richard would do a good job as well, but I think it's time that we have other people who are stepping up to serve to give other people the opportunity to serve our community. And Mr. McLean did an excellent job on the task force for municipal, task force that we just had recently and I think he'd be a good fit for this committee. And again, nothing against Mr. Foster, I appreciate everything that he's done for our community and I just think Mr. McLean would also be a good fit and I would like to see Mr. McLean appointed. Thank you.
Josh?
I'm glad we're all speaking. I feel like oftentimes when we have these votes, it's kind of done in a vacuum at least or we don't talk through and explain our reasoning, so I'm glad that we're all speaking. I think it's really important. And I especially don't like to vote on appointments where we have a choice without an explanation. So Mr. Foster has given years of service to the town and I'm especially thankful that he did step in when we needed it, as Mark mentioned. But I think at this point, I'm going to vote for Mr. McLean because I think at this point, we have a new assessor in place and I think we should get some new eyes on these issues that have been plaguing us for the years that we talked about with our assessor recently. And I think a fresh start would be good. Mr. McLean can hit the ground running with that, with the training. So I think that the fact that he affirmatively volunteered to be on the board, I think that really speaks to his interest and his, and so I appreciate that. To me, it's very, Mr. Foster was on the board, I think, for nine or 12 years on the Select Board. And it was, I appreciate him stepping up when reached out to, but Mr. McLean did it on his own initiative and I think that's great. So as always, I'm glad we have two candidates who are interested and I think we do a good job, but I'm going to vote for Mr. McLean on this one.
Thanks, yeah. And I'll just add that I echo much of what was said about Mr. Foster. To speak a little bit about Mr. McLean, I did have a chance to get to know him and work with him as part of the task force. He is a veteran who served his country. He is currently also getting his MBA and I think that maybe part of the reason why he applied for this position too is that he is entering that, you know, kind of entering that field, that world. And I know that in working with the task force and a couple of the task force folks are here too, would probably agree with me in saying that he is just very reasonable, very thoughtful, and really had a knack during our meetings of being able to find common ground and articulate that really well to move our discussion forward in times when it felt like maybe it was stuck or we couldn't, we couldn't get that common ground to move forward. So having worked with him over the past year, I think that he would be excellent in this position. So I wanted to add that because I know that Mark had a chance to talk about Mr. Foster because of his experience working with Mr. Foster, so I wanted to talk about my experience working with Mr. McLean. Anything else? Okay, no further discussion. So the motion is to appoint Mike McLean to this position. We've had a second and so we'll go to a vote. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? All right, congratulations, Mr. McLean. All right, next up, we have Select Board comments. Anybody have any comments they'd like to make? Mark?
Yeah, I was at a, I guess it's called a permanent building committee meeting this past week and I wanted to pass along to the Select Board their concerns about, and this is nothing new to us, but they're particularly concerned about building maintenance and the ability of the town to continue to do building maintenance when they see that as one of the things they're looking at. Frankly, it's true, I think we need, we owe it to the Building Committee and a few other people to take a look at the responsibilities of all the committees, the Building Committee, Capital Planning Committee, et cetera. But I think it's worth noting that they see a whole lot of deferred maintenance that just isn't coming up and they're not sure how to move that needle, given the issues the town's facing. I mean, it's not anybody's fault, it's the issues the town's facing and they spent quite a bit of time expressing their concern over it. I wanted to pass that along.
Anything else?
Excuse me, I had attended the Veterans Holiday Party at the Adult Center, just wanted to say thank you for Lena, the Veterans Agent in Town Viterwell Turo, excuse me. Great event, really, a lot of people had showed up to the event. And then also, I had another note, oh, the Stuff a Cruiser event as well. I was, I attended with Representative Ash, that was a great event. I saw Mr. Shea there as well, who's here tonight, another great event. And then finally, I just wanted to say thank you to the fire and first responders. I know over the past couple of weeks, we've had some house fires in town, unfortunately, most recently on Tennyson, just around the corner. So I guess Chief Rigney has been, you know, kind of thrown right into the fire, so to speak, and he's done an excellent job in terms of gathering everybody, getting everyone to put these fires out and make sure that everyone's safe. So I just want to thank the first responders for all that they've done to help our community.
Great, thank you. And Josh?
I just, this is normally way at the end of the meetings, but we have, there's an email posted to the agenda for accommodation for outstanding service for Val Ablin at the Long Meadow Adult Center. I just, I hope Val has been, this passed on to her. And it's a nice thing, you know, in our line of work, you don't see a lot of compliments and it's really nice to see this. And if other people have nice things to say about town employees especially, I think that that would be, do things like this because it's really nice.
Great, thanks. Anyone else? So for my Select Board comments, I'll just respond to the resident comment made by Mr. Shea and a couple of the questions that he brought up. We did meet last Monday and I think after Lynn and I met with Town Council, I sent an email back to you on Friday and you may have responded Friday night or Saturday night, just haven't a chance to twist on further, but some of the, some of the items that you brought up, I think that we discussed at our meeting, the last item about the task force having the authority. I think as we discussed, it wasn't the task force that had the authority, the task force made the recommendation to the Select Board and then the Select Board had the authority to move forward. The IGA, the signing of it, that was something that we talked to the Town Council about. Town Council did say that the Town of Long Meadow did have the authority to enter into the IGA. They, their opinion, and they read it differently, and I understand how you can see it, how you can read it your way, I totally understand, and that's why we go to Town Council. The Town Council said that the portion in there about the Municipal Light Plant Board taking actions is basically subsequent to the signing of the IGA and that the town can sign the IGA, the MLP board can take other actions after that. So they felt comfortable with that and did not see a problem. And that the, I actually don't think at our meeting we ever talked about the dispersment of the money, but that was also something that Town Council said that, you know, the town disperses that money now. They can have the, you know, they have the authority to do that and, and right now, the MLP's not even funded. And so this initial, two items of the pull applications and the design and engineering, the town has the authority to enter the IGA and disperse those funds. So I think that that should, should cover those questions, but if you have any, you know, further questions, feel free to email over. Thank you. Yeah, Mark?
We'd be talking about the IGA more in this meeting because there are some questions I have about it, I just don't know if this is-
Oh, yeah, it's on the agenda, yeah, to discuss today. And so that's all I had. So we'll move on to the Town Manager's Report. Lynn?
Thank you. This was uploaded late today. Email address change effective tomorrow, December 17th. All Town of Long Meadow employee email addresses will change from @longmeadow.org to @longmeadowma.gov. Emails sent to longmeadow.org accounts will be forwarded to the new email address for at least a year. The new email extension unifies with the town website and better reflects us as a municipal government entity. A Westcom update, the Executive Director of Westcom has submitted her resignation. Her last day will be February 2nd. The Westcom Board of Directors is going to be meeting to discuss the next steps. Greenwood Center, as we know, the open house is Friday and in advance of that, the Town Clerk's Office has moved to Greenwood Center. They moved on December 10th. A new mail drop box is going to be installed at Greenwood Center outside and the one that's currently used at Town Hall is going to be discontinued. We expect that in the next week. An RFQ, Request for Qualifications, was released to study Town Hall, Old Town Hall and Community House. We've talked about this in a lot of detail at previous meetings. Bid qualification packages are due December 20th. We'll then review the bids that were received, score them, interview, and then select a firm to begin by February. Converse Street L Project, this is the tip project. On Thursday, December 12th, 72 letters were sent to property owners with compensation value for their easements. Residents who receive a letter and have questions should call the DPW and speak with the engineering staff. And a bit of good news, there, on Thursday, December 5th, a resident called Long Meadow Fire Department for help. She inappropriately had been pushing leaves and twigs into a storm drain on Long Meadow Street and lost her wedding ring. The fire department was able to see the ring in the drain but were unable to access it. They called the DPW, who because of winter storms that week, were unable to assist but committed to assisting when the weather cleared. DPW went out and was ultimately able to locate and access the ring using a ladder, vacuum and metal detector. The ring owner and family were very grateful to the DPW and Fire Department for their help. The ring has belonged to the owner for 69 years. A big thank you to DPW employees Bill Drainville, Frank Gentile and Eric Fish for going above and beyond. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Any comments, questions about the Town Manager's Report or the Department Monthly Reports? Andrew?
Then a quick question, regarding the RFQ for the buildings, if we awarded it in February, about how long do you think it would take for this study to occur? Like, how many months would you guess?
It's, I think we put a timeframe in there that we want this wrapped up by the end of May.
Okay, thank you. Josh, did I see you with a question?
So I, I got two questions today from people who got the letters for the DPW, for the L Project and it's a five-year temporary easement and one of my friends said, is that, are they going to be on my lawn for five years? And I imagine not because they're moving on.
Right.
But it gives them the right for five years? Do we, should they talk to Tim directly for questions like that?
Yes. But I would not anticipate they would be on someone beyond for five years.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question, actually, just, I'm curious and maybe others are, is the amount that people are offered for these easements kind of a formula that's standard?
Yes.
And is that based on like a state thing or a municipal standard that we- And is that based on, like, a state thing or a municipal standard that we...
Based on the value of the parcel, and then whatever the equation is that the appraiser works out.
Got it. Anything else?
Just one comment for me on the building monthly report. One of our code enforcement officers mentioned that the number of complaints, both online complaints, written complaints, and phone calls have decreased dramatically, and they attribute that to the ongoing education work that the code enforcement folks have been doing. And so I see that as a positive and working the way that we intended it to work. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Vinnie, if I could just add to Andrew's question. It's also based on the size of the easement needed. So not every parcel is going to be impacted to the same degree. So it's based on square footage as well.
Are any of them permanent easements due?
There are two permanent easements, I believe. I could be wrong on that number, but it's single digits.
A permanent easement is they're taking the land for the road, for example? Or is it that they have the right to come on to the land at any time for work?
Probably both, or either. Yeah. Most of them are temporary easements, so it provides, like, they can go on the tree belt and up and stage there or get access on. But a permanent easement would be, they can access it forever. It's essentially...
Access it whenever necessary.
Yeah, or go over it.
Anything else? All right. We can move into old business. We've got approval of our draft meeting minutes from November 18th, which are attached. Any comments, discussion about those?
There were some changes, typos, edits, whatever. I sent them to Mike. So, you know, I don't know if anybody else caught them, but I saw them. So I sent them along. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as revised. There was not...
Second?
There was not a substantial change.
There was one vote that didn't have, put me in the motion, but you pointed that out. It was just accidentally left off, so.
I saw some typos, but I knew you'd handle it. Thank you, Mary. I seconded it.
Okay, seconded. Okay, great. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right, great. And then, next up for old business, we've got our municipal fiber discussion. So two items, the IGA and then the municipal light plant board discussion, a continuation of that from our last meeting. So the IGA is the same as it was at our last meeting, except for number 19. And all number 19 does is say that once the municipal light plant board is created, then it will step into the shoes of the select board in this IGA. And that's just pretty standard language that our attorneys put in there. And then, at our last meeting, too, one of the outstanding issues were just the insurance coverage numbers. We want to run it by our insurance carrier to make sure that it worked for the town. They said yes, so they cleared that. And our attorneys took another look at it and okayed everything. So, Mark, I think you said that you had some more questions?
Yeah, I guess my concern has to do with the reading of the warrant article that says the MLP will be authorized to enter into contracts. And I understand, Vinnie, that you commented that, you know, council or somebody looked at it, but I'd like to see that in writing, because I think it's going to get appealed to the attorney general, because the warrant article is very, very clear that it says the MLP shall. It doesn't say the select board acting as the MLP or the select board until there's an MLP. It says, "We're appropriating $400,000 and the select board and the MLP shall be authorized to act on behalf of that." So if we're going to act as a select board, counter to the vote of town meeting, we better have something in writing from our town council and not, you know, you saying he's opined on it. If he's opined on it, put it in writing, because we're going to have to, it's going to end up going to the AG's office, I suspect. And I just want to make sure that we're all in this together.
Yeah, I mean, we had our town council look at this before it was on the agenda again now. That's what they've said.
Put it in writing. Tell them to put it in writing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's fine, Mark. And so we can have them put it in writing. You know, I think a couple of things that you said about, it says that only the MLP board can enter contracts. I mean, that language is not specifically in the article. And so, you know, that's a misreading, but...
No, I didn't say that. What I said is that it authorizes the MLP to spend the money. It does. I'll read it to you.
Yeah, that's not what you said just two seconds ago.
Fine. It authorizes the MLP.
I just wanted to be clear for everyone listening to it.
It authorizes the MLP to spend the money.
So it's to take all steps necessary to carry out this task.
Right, but it doesn't say the select board. I mean, I'd like to be able to do it. We ought to be able to, but that wasn't the vote.
Well, the town, I'm looking at it now, the town will vote to transfer from funds to treasury the sum of 491 grand for the purpose of fiber network design. So I see what you're saying, but the vote is to spend the money.
Read the next sentence, Josh.
And to authorize the MLP board to take all the steps necessary to carry out this task. I see what you're saying.
Right. I mean...
Yeah, and I think just, you know, my response to Mr. Shea, too, I understand how you can read that and think that, and, you know, that's why we asked town council about it, and town council said it was fine, and...
I'm on the select board. I want it in writing, because I think we're going to get challenged.
Vinnie, if I could?
Yeah.
So we do have it in writing. It was an email. We posed that exact question. I'm reading their response. It's not a response that, it's in a whole email thread, so it's not one we would attach to an agenda. If a desire to receive an actual formal opinion that's on letterhead from town council is something that this board wants to do, we can proceed that way. It would likely make this happen at our next meeting in January, but I can read you the response if you want.
Yeah, sure.
So we posed that exact question with an excerpt of the town meeting warrant article language. And then we asked, can the town of Long Meadow enter the IGA, or do we need to wait for the MLP board to be populated to do so? Obviously, we want the work to get started as soon as possible. Town council's response. In our view, the town can enter the IGA, acting through the select board, which has the authority to enter into IGAs. We don't need to wait for a town meeting vote authorizing the MLP board. It would just be necessary for the MLP board to act. That said, we would recommend some language in the IGA to the effect that the parties acknowledge slash agree that any MLP established by the town will step into the select board's shoes as the successor at such time that the MLP is established.
So if I could, I'm not arguing that we can sign an IGA. You can sign it. An IGA is an intergovernmental agreement, and the select board can sign an IGA. I get that. I'm concerned about the spending of money that's what's authorized by the, by town meeting. Not, signing an IGA isn't my concern. We've signed all kinds of IGAs. We do it all the time. The select board's authorized to do it, and I think that's what it said.
And I think the first part of that answer responded to that, but then the rest of it responded to the...
And the only other thing I would add to that, too, is I think the issue is, if we were, if the funds were going to be spent in a different way, that's where I think we would run afoul. But if the funds are being expended the exact way the article says they're to be expended, I don't, I think, I don't think that's the issue.
Josh? So I think we have to think of this in two ways. So we are voting to enter in the IGA, not spend the money. And then, the town has already authorized to spend the money, which is in furtherance of the IGA, but we have the authority to enter into the IGA. So if that's what I, I think town council is saying the same thing a little differently. But, so I feel like I am, I'm comfortable with this. So we just have to think of it as two different things we're doing, because the IGA itself isn't spending the money. It's, because it says Long Meadow will pay shell. It doesn't say the MLP will, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm not arguing with that, Josh, and I want to make clear on that. We have the authority, I believe, from what I've heard, to sign, to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, an IGA. That's absolutely, I absolutely agree with that. You know, the question is, you know, when you say the town authorized the money to be spent, the town authorized the MLP to spend the money. They didn't authorize anybody else.
Well, it's, and to authorize. There are two clauses in there. I guess it depends on how you pull them together or read them separately.
Yeah, and Mark, if you want something formal from our town council, we can ask them for that.
Can we send Mark the email?
Damn.
Get it in writing?
No, I don't. The email, to me, doesn't answer the part about spending money. I didn't read, I don't hear that in the email. What I hear in the email is the town has authorized to enter into an intergovernmental agreement. And I believe that, I understand it, and I see why we do it all the time, and we can do that. You know, we're as authorized as anybody else.
Yeah, I think that was just the first sentence of that answer. I think the rest of the answer addresses it.
Mark, is your question, can only the MLP spend money?
Correct. Only the, that's, it says that, it's not that only the MLP can spend money, but that town meeting authorized the money to be spent by the MLP.
So the first sentence of the article says the town will vote to transfer from available funds to treasury the money?
Right, so we did. That's right. That's, we transferred it. That's legit. I mean, we can, we can break this down, sentence by sentence, phrase by phrase. What's the sentence? Second sentence? I'm trying to find, what article was that?
That's nine.
So, Mark, what is it that you want tonight? Do you want us to not sign the IGA?
No, no. I want to sign the IGA. I think we're authorized to sign. We just can't spend any money.
So, we can move forward here, and we'll have town council write something up formally, so that you can see that.
I'm fine with that, Vinnie. I, I'm not arguing that we can't or should not sign the IGA, but the intent of this is to start moving forward, I assume.
Yep.
And the question is, can the town, not the MLP, spend the money?
Right. And so town council has said yes, but you still have a question about whether that's true, so we can have our town council, if you want them to write up something formally for you to have, then we can do that.
Vinnie, if I may, I don't think it's, Mark's not asking unreasonable question. I guess we could vote to sign this, which we will. I think before we send out any money, just to cover our butts, let's get that question answered. It's not just for Mark, it's for everybody, so we don't get...
That's my point, Josh. That's, it's not signing the MLP.
Yeah, and so if they, if town council already agrees with this, then they can whip up a memo in the next couple of days before we send out any money.
Right, and so I'm just trying to move the discussion along, because I think that's where we're at, and I don't know, you know, we're kind of repeating ourselves.
No, but my concern is I'm being characterized as being unreasonable, when it clearly says, "And to authorize the MLP board to take all steps necessary to carry out the task."
Yeah, I don't think...
It authorizes the MLP board. It does not authorize...
Mark, no one's calling you unreasonable.
No one has said I'm unreasonable. I said, even when Mr. Shea brought this up, I said this to you, too. I understand how this can be read this way, but I also don't know, you know, I don't want our discussion to just keep repeating itself. I said, it seemed, I had a question about whether you wanted to delay signing that IGA. You said no. What you want is something formally written by our attorneys, so that's what we'll do.
Before the select board, or the town spends money, counter to what I read in this warrant article.
Yep, so I think that's the next step, right?
And if I could, I'd also like to see us move forward pretty expeditiously to whatever it may take to form that MLP board, so they can go ahead and spend that money as they're intended to. And frankly, I'm not sure how we even do that at this point.
Yeah, that's our next discussion.
Well, I love repeating discussions personally, but I would move that we approve, we direct the town manager to enter into the intergovernmental agreement for professional service, fiber network and design, and project management services between town of Long Meadow and South Hadley Electric Light Department.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right. So next, our municipal light plant board discussion. So we had a few questions come up at our last meeting, so we talked to town council, got some of those answered. So I'm going to try to walk through this as best as I can. It's a little bit complicated. There was a question posed at our last meeting about whether we would need a charter change, because the charter specifically lists the boards and committees in town that must be elected. We brought this to town council. Town council said we did not need to change the charter for this, because although it lists the boards and committees that need to be elected, it's not exclusive or limited to those. So they said best practice would be to, you know, eventually change it to reflect that the municipal light plant board would be elected, if we'd go that route. But that's not something that should hinder us at this point. Now, the, something that we didn't discuss at our last meeting that came up was that to elect the municipal light plant board, we would need an article at town meeting that basically creates the makeup of the board and how many seats there will be and how, what the term lengths are. So this is not something that we could get on the ballot for our annual town election in June. We would have to have a vote at town meeting on this article, and then we would have to elect the board at our annual town meeting, our annual town election, sorry, in, you know, June of 2026. So there would be, you know, a delay in electing the MLP board.
Or in our special meeting for the middle school.
So, so next September, there will most likely be a vote to fund the middle school. And so we did ask our town council about whether we could elect the MLP board at that September meeting, and they said no, because then that would change the length of the terms and, you know, make that much too complicated. So they recommended that we stick with our annual town elections. If the select board were to serve as the municipal light plant board, there was a question about whether we could start that way and then change to an elected board later. The answer is yes, but we would have to wait three years to do so. So the select board would have to serve as the MLP board for three years, and then after that point, if we wanted to switch to an elected board, we could switch at that time. The process for the select board serving as MLP board, we would need an article at our annual town meeting, and then for, and then a ballot question that would go out to the town for approving the select board to serve as the MLP board. That could be on our September ballot with, with the middle school vote. So if the select board were to serve as the MLP board, you know, that could basically be formed next September if it passes both of those votes. A member of our fiber task force, Peter Worley, reached out to me and had an idea that if the select board were to serve as the MLP board, whether the task force should, like, be maintained as an advisory board to the select board, as someone that we could, you know, rely on for their expertise, or, you know, ask them to carry out certain tasks or research, which I thought was a good idea if the select board were to choose to serve as MLP board. I also know that on the task force, I think, at this point, it would make sense for me to step down from the task force, and I think there are probably maybe a couple of other folks that, you know, because of other commitments, would be stepping off as well. So we could also get some new ideas, new people in the task force as well. And, and then Henry Landwatt, who's here, sent a memo around that was attached to correspondence, kind of going through what he saw were pros and cons for either route. And one of them was interesting, talking about if the select board were to serve as MLP board, how it would not be exempt from 30B procurement rules where an MLP board would be. And that is, and so we asked town council about that. Town council said that this is actually a gray area. There's no guidance on this from the attorney general's office or anywhere else, really. And so they believe that the select board would be exempt as well from 30B procurement, but again, it's not something that's, there's any guidance on, so we don't know that for sure. But that's their reading of it. So that was a lot, but, and, yeah, Andrew?
Thanks for the excellent summary. I know this is, a lot went into that. There's a lot to unpack here, but just to...
Thanks for the excellent summary. I know this is, a lot went into that. There's a lot to unpack here, but just to close the loop, we, we had also discussed the possibility of someday having a board, but then reverting it back to the select board, when kind of the hard work is done, it's just a matter of racing. Did we ever find out if that was possible?
In the reverse, I don't think-
The converse?
Yeah, I don't think we found that out, but I don't know if that's possible, so.
Okay.
Because I think, I think what town council said was that this, it was kind of intentionally done this way for the select board to serve as MLP board at the outset, and they have that kind of restriction of it having to be three years. It's kind of like the heaviest lift.
That sounds, which is what we were kind of averse to ironically. We can do it after the hard work is done, and now it seems like the easiest thing is for us to do the hard work, and then, but at that point, fine. Like, you know, okay.
Yeah, Josh?
I just, I want to thank Henry for the memo he sent us. I thought that the most interesting part was, and this, I thought it was interesting to put it this way, there's a conflict of interest, because the select board is for accountable to taxpayers, and the MLP is for ratepayers. And so the select board, you don't want them looking at that rate and saying, oh, we jacked that up, then we can fund this project, and people may start leaving, or, you know, and the MLP in theory would be independent, and people would vote for somebody who says, yeah, I'm going to lower the rates, cut costs here and there. I, I thought that, that was a really good point, and that is kind of something I've been circling around, but I hadn't really put it that way, and that's a, a great point. I think that that is, to me, one of the biggest problems. And you could also, somebody may be very interested and would be a good select board member, not give a rip about this, and have no interest in, in governing it, and which I think is reasonable, because it's a different ballgame.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Mark?
Yeah, a couple of responses. One is, Josh, I, I don't think that conflict of interest is any different than us being water and sewer commissioners. Jack up the water rate, and that way we can pay for, you know, we're, especially the stormwater business, as we're moving things over, so.
That's true.
I would really discount that. The, I, I like the idea of having the task force be advisors to the select board. I think that makes a, a whole, whole lot of sense. The issue of 30B, frankly, my personal opinion is, great, we ought to abide by 30B. I mean, it makes sense, you know, even, for example, trash hauling is exempt from 30B, and we go out for bidding. I think, you know, there's far more benefits to abiding by 30B than using the alternate way to, to get, get around it and not abide by 30B. And yeah, sometimes it takes, you know, a couple more months to do it, but it's, it's, it's a better way to do business when you're, when you're a municipality. So, you know, I, I, I think that given those issues, and the better pathway that says, let the select board start out, and if you can't do it, we can't do it, three years, we're done, move on. I, you know, with, with an advisory group, I think that's a, a great alternative.
Thank you. Yeah?
Could you just comment on South Hadley in terms of what, you know, what was their transition?
So it, it's, it's, they were kind of a, it's a different situation, because they already had a municipal light plant, and so they've got their municipal light plant, they have a municipal light plant board. So yeah, so it's not, that's not really a good analogy, I think, to-
And then the other, then what Mark was saying, and maybe Josh, but just having the task force, I think, I think that's a great idea. I mean, they've been looking at this for two plus years now, and I just think it'd be very valuable, you know, in the next couple of years to have them by our side, so.
Yeah, I, I didn't say that, but I agree. No, I only pointed out a downside, but I, I think, given what Benese told us, we can't let this sit for that long, and so people are excited, we have momentum. I really think it is, I wish we didn't have to do it, but I, I don't really see an alternative, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the timing of just if we elect a board, that can't be ceded until June of 2026 is-
Yeah.
Yeah. Just have a quick question. Isn't an ML, an MLP an independent governmental agency? And, and not part of the Town of Long Meadow? I mean, so why does the charter of the Town of Long Meadow impact the MLP? The MLP needs to have its own governance, and it does have its own governance. So when we, you know, we're, we're sitting here saying the, you know, the Town of Long Meadow charter says, and whatever, that has nothing to do with the MLP, I believe. I mean, I'm not an attorney, but, but it's, you know, South, Sheldon is separate from the Town of South Hadley. They're separate organizations. Sheldon can enter into contracts, they can deal with other, separate from, so similarly, our MLP isn't part of the town. And I think we need to keep that in mind when we look at what this is. Now, can they have, pardon the expression, interlocking, or overlapping, or duplicated boards? Yes, but as, as governmental agencies, it's as different as Long Meadow and East Long Meadow, I believe.
Yeah, and I think, I think at our last meeting, we questioned whether we needed a charter change, and we don't. We don't need a, we don't need to change anything in the charter. They just said it'd be best practice.
But the, but the MLP doesn't fall under Long Meadow's charter.
Yeah, right, and I, and so that's what we discovered after talking to our councils, that we don't need to, that the charter change doesn't impact the MLP.
Fine.
Yeah.
But we still have to elect them, and that, that's an issue.
Oh, I'm not saying that it wouldn't take 18 months or two years. I get it, but, but the MLP is, is going to be an independent organization.
Yep.
And, and the last thing, Benese, is, you know, what happened to the discussion or the option, which I know people didn't like, of hiring a manager? You know, I know nobody wants to spend money, but that's the cleanest. I think, Josh, you're the one who said that, so, but that's the cleanest. It, it puts some professionalism into it, and maybe somebody like East Long Meadow wants to split a manager with us or something.
Well, I think with any of these options, there does need to be a manager, but it just depends on how expansive those duties are going to be for the manager. So if there's a municipal light plant board, or, you know, a select board serving, the manager would be doing the day-to-day, but they would receive a stipend, as opposed to, you know, a larger salary.
Well, so, and East Long Meadow, it's a friend I've known my entire life, is the IT director. He's been the IT director for 25 years. And he's, it's just, it's an additional job on top of it. It's probably a lot of things he would be doing anyway, but it's a stipend, yeah. I don't know if our IT director has his hands full already. If there is something like that, and, and I, I, when we're thinking of the MLP as a separate entity that just happens to have all the same members as the select board, it is a little bizarre in that way. But yeah, an MLP, or a manager, I think would also be, it's an interesting idea to me. I just don't know who it would be. And I don't know if Ryan is, somebody that is already works an incredible amount of time already from another town. I think that would be tough. But if there's somebody who could do that on top of other things, maybe.
Somebody in LCTV?
They're, they're listening right now.
I understand that, but, 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 you know, if, if you're looking for somebody who wants to get involved, we get, you know, something like that, I don't know. There's, there's skills.
Yeah, and I think with, you know, selecting who the municipal light plant manager would be, that's going to be discussion of the MLP.
Right, but, but it's clear that Lynn and Mike and all that shouldn't be it, and it's going to fall to somebody who's going to get phone calls.
Yeah, they're definitely not going to be it.
I, I understand that, but, but unless the, unless the phone number rings in South Hadley.
Yeah, it's typically the IT director, the town's IT director, that serves in that role. And so, you know, our IT director has been involved with these discussions, and, but anyways. Okay, any, anything else on this? So, should we be taking a vote tonight, or to move forward on this, or?
I don't feel like we've, at least in my mind, I don't think we've come to a conclusion.
Yeah, so maybe we'll, I, I guess, before we, we thought that we would need the MLP, if we're going to have it elected, we would need the MLP board on the ballot for June. We know that that's not even a possibility, so there is no rush to take any action on this tonight. Yeah, okay, so we will continue this discussion?
I think we should. I would, it's probably a good idea to explore the manager idea, at least. I really, you know, I, our last meeting, I talked my, until I was blue in the face. I, I really think that it is not something that we want to take on as a board. If, timing-wise, if we have to, sure, but it's a big lift, and it, it, well, having, maybe having, I don't even know what we'll have to do, but we may be learning about things that none of us have any, Dan's in the tech world at least, but.
We're, we're in a lot of trouble.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean-
But that's the only Venn diagram overlap.
Yeah, no, that's, I mean, the task force that kind of got in the edict that we were not to kind of explore any options that would add personnel to the town. But, you know, at this point, if their people are open to it, then we, we can take a look at that, and there's no rush to-
But we're not adding personnel to the town. We're adding personnel to an MLP entity, a different entity, that would have to decide, does this person have benefits, and what are the benefits, and what, whose retirement are they on, and all? They're, they, they're not likely a town employee. I mean, it's got to be set up in strange ways, but, you know.
I heard, uh, maybe not.
Maybe not, and maybe not, but it needs to be looked at.
Like I said, typically, the, the town's IT director also serves as the MLP.
And, and that's fine.
So.
Maybe we should do that until it doesn't, unless it doesn't work or something.
But I mean, we can, we can explore this option.
This is, the MLP, in theory, is a money-making venture, so if they have to pay somebody to do a good, a better job than we would do, then, and maybe that's, maybe that's it.
Yeah, okay, so we can look into that further and, and come back with more information about having just an MLP manager. And then, you know, of course, if anyone else has any questions about this discussion or anything else, just send them along, and we'll, we'll continue this discussion.
Have we looked at other, I imagine we, we've looked at other communities, right, that are, that have just adopted this, and, and the next steps and the rollout?
Yeah, and our town, I think our town council, they currently represent, I think, what, 20 or 30 towns that have this setup? So, you know, they've been, you know, obviously very helpful in talking through these scenarios and everything, because, you know, they've done a lot of this. So yeah, and we can also speak with them, speak with other towns.
This should be a topic at MMA.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, through this process, other towns have been so generous with their time, and giving up the task force advice, giving us, you know, ideas, you know, we've reached out to our counterparts in East Long Meadow, West Springfield, Chickapie. So, you know, we, there's a wealth of knowledge around here with all the, with all the towns doing this, so. Okay, well, so I think we have some next steps. We'll, we'll look into that and come back, uh, next meeting with some more information. Okay, anything else? All right, then we will move next to our 2025 annual liquor license renewals, and Mike, did you have?
Yeah, well, so we just left one kind of hanging fruit at the last meeting. We had some questions about the bottle shop renewal liquor license, and the board had taken a vote to request that they submit a letter of intent for their next steps. I haven't got a chance to get anything back, or I didn't receive anything, so really, it's the board's decision to, you know, either approve the license, you can approve, I think there was some conversation on approving for a, a certain period of time, until you did figure out more information, but ultimately, it's up to the, to the board to decide.
Yeah, I think someone proposed at the last meeting to maybe give them like a three-month extension, right, to get back to us. And so I think our options are either that, or approving them for a full year, or not approving it at all.
Correct, okay.
We've got the expert here.
Just before it falls out of my head, the, there was two that had outstanding tax payments?
Yes, that's all said.
We, did we vote on them, contingent on them paying?
Yes, correct.
Okay, great.
I thought it was a water bill, sorry.
Yes, or is that the, water, it was a water and something else?
Yeah, so I, I've never had a, a client in this position, so Mark brought up the short renewal, which I didn't know was possible. Thankfully, I've never had, been in that position, but I think that might be the idea here. So I, I talked to Mike and Lynn about this today, because I, I heard from somebody who was interested in the license, but hasn't had contact with the owner. And I just, I don't know what is going on with the license, and we've, we had the same conversation last year during renewal, and asked for an update, and as I said at the last meeting, I do not, this is not Bottle Shop's fault. It was a sprinkle issue, whatever it was. There was a fire, it was an act of God. It wasn't something I want to punish somebody for, but I, that building's going to be ready to open soon, and if the bottle shop's going to go in, or the license is going to go in there, or there's a few other places in town maybe, it should be used. It's tax revenue for the town, it is service to people of the town, and we can't let it sit forever, and, but I, I don't want to take it out of somebody's pocket, but we got to put some pressure on, and I think a short renewal is a good idea, because we had this conversation a year ago, didn't put any teeth on it. I think we got to put some teeth on it.
Were you thinking three-month renewal, like was kind of mentioned at our last meeting?
Three months to have a contract in hand. That is a perfectly reasonable amount of time. That would be very quick to have the transfer ready to go, but if, and if anybody's watching this, want to take, they can get a hint. You can have a contract contingent on getting a lease, so you can have the contract to purchase the license contingent on finding a home for it. I have a, I just had one where it took me nine months to negotiate a lease with the landlord, but I had a contract for my client to buy the, the store. So if I, I would feel comfortable with that in hand, maybe not an indefinite contingency on the lease, but if in three months, they say, I, we're going to buy this license, and we have another three months to find a, a home for it, something like that, I would feel comfortable with that. So I think a 90-day renewal contingent on there being a, a purchase.
And, and Mike, last year, when we asked the bottle shop to provide us with an update, did we ever receive anything?
Um, no.
Okay, and so now we haven't received anything?
I haven't received anything, no. Yeah, I sent, I sent two emails, and obviously, they don't have a, you know, mailing address because of the business, but, you know, I could also try to find a different contact for them as well. Maybe that email is out of service, but they did get the email to bring the renewals in, because, you know, they would have had to get the renewal paper from me via email, so.
Okay, all right.
Did you have a conversation when the renewal, is there a phone number on the renewal?
It's a, it was a business phone for that.
Have you, did you have a conversation when they brought the renewal in?
Yes, and they, at, at that point, they said that there was something verbally in place, but as I mentioned to them, it's something that the board would need to see in writing, which I think you would agree with. So verbally, yes, or maybe something in place, but at this point, I just need to have that, you know, written statement.
Yep. That, I mean, that sounds reasonable to me. I think this is kind of just the last opportunity, one more 90-day extension, and, you know, with just, I, I think we can kind of be explicit to say, if we don't hear anything in 90 days, then, you know, we'll, we won't offer the renewal.
It, it reverts to the town at that point?
Yeah, yep.
How many licenses do we have remaining?
For all alcohol packaged store licenses, there is none. There's only beer and wine, yes.
This is why they're very valuable. You know, every town, every 5,000 residents gets, you get one all-alcohol license, and that's it. So it would be, it's a hot ticket.
Josh, how would you word, you know, what are we looking for in 90 days, I guess? You know, it's, the motion needs to, I mean, I can understand, we're renewing it for 90 days, you know, one quarter of the annual cost, whatever it is, but contingent upon what?
Uh, yeah, so I, I can make a motion. I move that we renew, what is the, is it the Bottle Shop, what is the license name?
Bottle Shop Inc.
I, I move that we renew the license for Bottle Shop Inc. for 90 days contingent, to expire without the, providing the select board a signed purchase and sale agreement for the license to be transferred to a purchaser. And I, I think we just leave it at that.
I'll second the motion, just for the purpose of discussion, if you want, but I just have a question. What if they decide they're going to move back in?
They can do that.
Well, but that doesn't meet your requirement, you, because you made a contingent on a signed purchase and sale agreement, I mean- signed purchase and sale agreement, I mean.
Or, sure, so.
It should be or.
Modified or a, a lease.
Right.
Yeah, a, a lease to reopen the license.
Use it or sell it, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
90 days, though, from, from what date?
It would be from January 1st, so, end, end of March.
End of March, okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just, I have another deal, I'm working on another town, and the, the town has been very generous in renewing it, and I, I feel like we're also being very generous, and I, I just, the ABCC, we do not have to do this, ABCC would let us take it away, even without the fire, or even with the fire, years ago, so I, I really, we are trying to do the right thing here, and I, and we're trying to find a, a middle ground, a, a middle ground, so everyone can be happy.
I agree, I think last year, for us to give them the one-year renewal was the right thing to do, I think now we're being generous with giving them an extra 90 days here, so I really hope that they, they do respond.
No.
Anyone else?
That was just the first two years.
Okay, so we've got motion, we've got a second, no further discussion, all those in favor? All right, great. Next on our agenda is the Select Board Town Manager FY 2025 goals, so we discussed this at our meeting in November and then decided that we want to include additional goals, so at the bottom of this document, we, we go through some of the goals that we talked about that we want to include, so these, you know, these are items like the review of policies for potential updates, the Glenbrook Middle School Repurpose Plan, long-term budgeting and managing debt services, and then DPW-related items such as the public shade tree management, the pavement management, and water sewer and stormwater infrastructure, and then, you know, we did talk about this both at our meeting with the facilitator and at our November 18th meeting, but I, you know, obviously want to see if anyone has anything else they wanted to add. Otherwise, you know, I think it's good practice for us to vote to formally adopt these goals, and so before we take that vote, does anybody have anything they want to speak to?
Yeah, Josh? Just one thing, I, I wonder if we want to be more specific on the water sewer and stormwater infrastructure and rate analysis, just, I, I think there's kind of some goals within there, because like that, we want the stormwater to be self-funding eventually, and I, maybe when it gets implemented, this will be fleshed out a bit more.
Yeah, so ideally, what, I just put the notes at the bottom, ideally, what would happen when I bring it back, when we bring it back quarterly, is that it would be incorporated into a, a category similar to how it's all laid out above, so we'll have an opportunity to talk about that when we bring it back, when it's fully broken down.
When is the presentation, isn't that presentation coming soon?
Yeah, this, the report's not done yet, but yes.
Mark, did you see?
Yeah, Josh, just as a comment, the, there's, there's a policy in place by the select board that will make the stormwater, so it's not going to be for a while, but it's being phased in, so I think that's already been, it's in place, if you will, it's just a matter of how, if, if there should be any modifications to it.
Well, yeah, I, I didn't mean that, that's a new idea, just, yeah, that, how that's going to be implemented versus our rates and how that will affect it, but yes, I, you're right.
Anything else?
One thing, I'm just thinking of the, the town, Glenbrook Middle School Repurpose Plan, I think Andrew brought that up maybe last time, great idea. I did see the, the CPC right now, committee, they're looking, I think there is someone who submitted a proposal for the, I think, the fields, so I, I'm just bringing that up because it's something that we might want to try to pay attention to with that whole space, because we're, we're talking about the, the actual building itself, repurposing that piece, but also funding potentially the fields as well, so just wanted to bring that up to the board, just to keep an eye on that for, you know, some of the discussions that we're probably going to be having.
Yeah, Mark?
Just a comment, Dan, you're right, I, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned also about, I don't know if you're concerned, but I'm concerned about, about funding the fields in a building that's going to disappear, or how we're going to do that, and I, I think that the issue is, it's, I believe that funding is before the Community Preservation Committee and not before an organization, if you will, that, that the town or the town DPW or whatever has, has control over, so that basically gets independently decided by the Community Preservation Committee, I believe, and then goes before town meeting.
We've been concerned about this.
I mean, yeah, we talked about it.
For two years ago, when we were doing the Glenbrook softball fields, and this has been something on, in mind, yeah.
It's the same thing.
It's a really, it's a really good question, because, you know, it's coming, CPC is doing it on Wednesday, I believe they're talking about it, and I've spoken with Lynn about it as well, and it's a fair question, because in an ideal world, of course, there's a lot of benefits of preserving these fields, but you don't know exact, we don't know exactly what's going to happen, and to put two and a half million dollars into it, you either do it because you want to fix them up in the years between now and when this thing is decided, is it worth investing two and a half million dollars for like three years or four years, or you're really banking on it, as many of us think would be positive, a positive result, that it is going to continue to be fields, and then it's absolutely worth investing in potentially, although, you know, we don't know exactly what's going to happen, you know, so it's a, it's a tough call, and the CPC is the first one to vote on it, so.
It's still school committee property, isn't it, even the fields?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think that that was another aspect of this, that we discussed too, was just beginning that process to explore that transfer from the school committee to the town of these properties. So, yeah, it says Glenbrook Middle School Repurpose Plan, but I think there's a lot of different parts of that. Anything else? All right, so I will move that the select board adopt the 2025, FY 25, Select Board Town Manager Goals as listed in the attached document to the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. And then, our next item, also from our last meeting, adopting the FY 2025 Select Board Meeting Calendar. The meeting calendar reflects our discussion about adjusting our meetings in February, March, and April, and, and in May, to accommodate February vacation as well as April vacation, spring break, and then, one additional item is that we are going to cancel our January 6th meeting. This is something that we also did last year, the first meeting after winter break. It's typically a very light agenda, and it's also difficult to get folks that we need to come in, because folks are just getting back from, from their vacation and are usually, usually playing catch-up, so we decided to cancel that meeting as well. Any discussion on this meeting calendar?
I don't know what the discussion it needs to be, I mean, I, there's a couple of dates in here that I thought I would, I would have, I, I will not be able to make these meetings because of travel that I would have been able to make the other meetings, and I'm personally concerned about it, because I made plans based on a meeting calendar that we had already adopted.
Okay, I mean, we could talk about switching it, or if you're comfortable joining us virtually?
At least one of them, I can't join virtually, but, but, I'm, I'm, that's, my only point is, you know, if, if we create a calendar, I know it's hardships for people, but there are other people who would make their plans around that calendar.
Yeah, no, I understand.
That's a fair point.
Had we, and I totally, if there's something in particular we want to talk about, I'm fine, but had, did we set the 2025 calendar?
We, that was set in the summer.
In the summer, we set all of FY 25.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah, and on the flip side of it, I would, Mark, I was, because of these changes, I'm able to go to some of them, so.
Yeah.
And I, I think that you make a great point.
I get it, so, you know, if you're going to change, you know, I'm, I'm not going to stand between, you know, what makes sense for a lot of people, I'm just making the comment, that's all.
Yeah, and I think in my first, I think, meeting as chair, I brought up that we should make these changes to accommodate winter break and, or, you know, February vacation and spring break, because, you know, it's not just the select board, it's just also the folks that we have that come and present and all of that, too, that it affects them, and I think at that meeting, we had discussed, you know, let's wait a little while, and we can talk about changing those dates later, but I think that at some point, we, we have to hopefully set a precedent with setting our meetings to, to accommodate those two breaks, and, you know, I think that there's going to be some, some, some gripe pains with that, unfortunately.
And I think for, I'm not throwing out, but the summer breaks as well, or summer meetings, if we, we have, in the past, so these two or three years, have canceled a couple, but I think we should think about that earlier. I, I know that we, we did that after the reorganization, but if we have a, a general practice that we do, I think that'd be very helpful.
Yeah, that's a great point, I think last year's, we went down to one meeting in July and one meeting in August, which was, you know, a departure.
But they didn't necessarily follow a pattern, I guess, yeah, so.
Yeah, Mark, is there a specific date, the, which date is the one that you can't make?
Yeah, but it was.
March 10?
No, no, I, I, I'll look at them, but I, it was in April, it was the April meeting, April 28th, I could have made the April.
21st.
21st, whatever. The only other question I have is, do we know this room is available, or do we kick out whoever might have been here?
No one's, no one's in those meeting, no one was in those meeting rooms on Mondays, it's every other Tuesday, and then it's the opposite Monday.
That's fine, just stick with it for me, that's fine.
Well, I mean, the, there is a, a fix we could make of switching April 28th to May 5th, because we, we did cancel that meeting date, because it would have been back-to-back weeks, so we could switch that to May 5th, so you can make it.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, that's totally fine.
The rest of us will be here because of kids in school and such, so.
Cinco de Mayo.
That would be helpful, thank you. So, wait, say it again?
So it's just switching April 28th to May 5th instead.
Which was a regular meeting night anyway?
Yeah.
On the original calendar.
What else do we have in?
So in May, that just makes it, so May 5th, we would have a meeting, May 13th is our annual town meeting, and then we have another meeting, May 19th.
Okay.
Does that make, is there any complication, just devil's advocate, is there anything at that period right, you know, before budget season or the town meeting that we?
April 7th is the last date to set the, or it.
Okay, so it'll be on autopilot after that.
As long as we don't move that one.
In, in general, don't we, we have at times scheduled additional meetings for budget time, too, so.
On the budget calendar, we put some additional meetings, I think, between March 10th and April 7th, or March 24th and April 7th.
Changing April 28th to the 5th in May would be very helpful.
Okay, great, so I will move to adopt the FY 2025 calendar, amending the April 20, canceling the April 28th meeting and adding the May 5th meeting.
Second?
Sorry, okay, second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Sorry, just one, I didn't mean to interject between your vote. This, I think that what Josh brought up about the summer schedule will continue to be a problem if we set this calendar on a fiscal year basis. I don't, I have not come across anything that requires that, so you could do a calendar year basis to set the, your calendar, just something to think about.
Yeah, okay.
For the January, if you do want to do that, for the January, for the January 21st meeting, I could propose for the rest of the year.
Yeah, that'd be great, if you could do that, yeah, thank you. Okay, moving along now to new business, we have a memo from the Chair of the Audit Committee about a recommendation extending the external auditor contract into FY 2025 and 26. The memo also speaks to our Finance Director, Ian Cottington, being in, in favor of this recommendation, and, and I, and hopefully folks have had a chance to review this, I don't know, Lynn, if you have anything additional to add, or if folks have anything to speak to on this, memo's pretty clear.
I'm always impressed by Markham LLP now, when they come in, and so, I agree with this.
Yeah, perfect, okay.
You need to vote to extend, how move that we extend the audit contract with, I think there's still Markham LLP for another, was it for two years, for 25, fiscal years 25 and 26?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, and then next, we've got our common vic renewals, there is a memo, everyone got them in, Mike?
We just did receive one today from Alex's Bagels, so kindly, if you can also add that to your vote, all the paperwork checks out and they have submitted payment. We're still waiting on two, sometimes that happens and they'll come forward in January, so if there are any, you know, stragglers hanging around, then I'll move them forward to the board for approval in January. But you probably recall last year, we, I sent the memo out saying how it hasn't been done a certain way in the past, and we reverted to this way where now all the businesses are properly applying for them, besides the ones that just have liquor licenses, so it seems to be working out pretty well.
Perfect, great, anything on this?
Yeah, if you could just add Alex's Bagels to the vote, that would be helpful, too, all their paperwork is in.
So I moved to approve the 2025 common vicular licenses of the establishments listed in the agenda attachment, and also adding Alex's Bagels.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, great. And then we are going to set our annual town election for 2025, as is standard, it's the second Tuesday of June, so this year it is June 10th, polls open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Anything on this one? Okay, so I will move that we set the annual town election for Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, and I think this will, with polls open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and the location being the Long Meadow Community House at 735 Long Meadow Street.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, and any comments about correspondence? Okay, all right, I move to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, all is in favor? All right, thank you everyone.
Thank you, everybody.